Ask you to please join and join us in the pledge. Stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Duranty.
Yes.
Foltz.
Present.
Rappaport.
Present.
Richards.
Here.
Sharp.
Present.
Statchow is absent, excused. We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Commissioner Duranty, second by Commissioner Rappaport. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve the December 6th, 2022 meeting minutes. Duranty?
Yes.
Foltz?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
And Sharp?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
At this time of our meeting, if there's anything that is not on our agenda that you would like to speak on, this would be the time to bring it up. I see nothing. We will move into our agenda. First item on our agenda is case 1684B, proposed site plan and special land use approval for proposed drive-through restaurant at 2646 South Wayne Road. Commissioner A. U. -- or, sorry. President A. U., Director A. U.
Thank you, Chairman. We had a lengthy conversation about presidents earlier. I think that's still stuck in your mind. The property here is approximately 1.4 acres. It's Zone CB4. That's our vehicle service district. The site currently contains an existing Marathon gasoline station just at the bottom of that red outline there. That's the south. The petitioner tonight is requesting site plan and special land use approval to build a drive-through restaurant on the vacant northern portion of the site. That's the portion outlined in red. The specific restaurant has not been identified, at least it was not identified to the planning department at the time of writing the staff report. Perhaps the petitioner has better insight on that tonight. Some of the adjacent land uses and zoning are property to the north, is owned R5, single family residential that is developed with a school. I believe there's a church element associated with that as well. Properties to the south are located in the city of Wayne and are developed with a variety of commercial and residential uses. As part of the public noticing process, the city of Wayne was notified along with their residents that are within -- and business owners that are within 300 feet compliant with state laws. Properties to the east are Zone CB4, vehicle service and CB1, general commercial business district. That's on your right-hand side across Wayne. They are developed with a variety of commercial and office uses. And then property to the west is one large property, Zoned MHR, mobile home residential, and is developed with a mobile home park. There are no modifications being proposed to the existing site that will impact points of ingress and egress. The site will continue to utilize the two existing curb cuts, one located at Wayne Road there on your screen, and the other located at Glenwood on the bottom of your screen. The portion of the site that will -- the drive-through will exist is proposed to be a one-way traffic pattern. The addition of the drive-through operation to the existing site is obviously expected to generate new traffic during lunch and dinner hours. There was a traffic impact study conducted that's required for all drive-through restaurants in the city be conducted by a certified traffic engineer. That study reported no concerns. The engineer that conducted the study and the firm that conducted the study that you have a copy of indicated that the roadway has sufficient capacities and abilities to be able to handle this drive-through restaurant with minimal impact. The proposal requires stacking spaces which the petitioner is complying with and also 31 parking spaces which the site plan provides 33, so that is in compliance as well. There's also an escape lane being provided with sufficient room for an emergency vehicle to navigate or any of the patrons to navigate if they need to. Indicated as a bypass lane there. Let's see. There is no outdoor storage proposed. There is a new dumpster enclosure being provided to service the drive-through in this location over here. The dumpster enclosure will have to comply with the design requirements, masonry wall, cement under it, and things like that. There is enough room for a pickup truck to maneuver into and out of the site. In relation to landscaping and screening, the drive-through development will trigger additional landscaping requirements in the development area. The site plan shows new trees and shrubs and a berm. The location of the new plantings are in compliance with the zoning requirement. Let's see here. There's a shrub, there's a berm indicated along Wayne Road frontage which is in compliance with the zoning ordinance. We are shying away from berms. I did not have this conversation with the petitioner, but during the permitting process, we might allow him to deviate from that berm requirement depending on where we are with our zoning update. Just wanted to mention that on the record. There's also a six-foot-tall masonry wall being proposed on the west side along the mobile home residential zoning district to screen that residential property. There is a rendering in your backup of what the proposed building will look like. It's constructed out of brick masonry-type materials. It's on your screen. Finally, the proposed use is consistent with the master plan, land use designation of the specific property in the area, which is community commercial. And lastly, the administration and planning department is recommending approval of this petition, subject to the petitioner installing no-left turn signs at both driveways. That is the Glenwood and Wayne drive-throughs that exist there today. I do want to mention, Chairman, that we received, as you know, several concerns from St. John's, I believe, school and church that I had mentioned earlier. All of those concerns were addressed by the applicant. Most of those concerns relate to the site plan, which are also addressed, obviously, in the site plan. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Would you like to come forward and introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Alan Hall with API. We're from Waterford, Michigan. And the owner's with me also, Wally, that he can kind of explain what we're going to do there in the facility.
Anything you'd wish to add?
Actually, Ma'am, did a great job of presenting that. I just want to add a couple of things. We're fine without putting a berm in. If that's the case, that's fine. And the wall next to the trailer park there, that's existing wall. So that's there right now. So it's not proposed. It's actually in there.
Okay.
And otherwise, it's an 1,800-square-foot building with a drive-through.
All right. This is a public hearing, so if you want to have a seat, we'll call you back up.
Thank you.
Anyone on my right wish to speak on this? Anyone on my left wish to speak on this? Are you coming up, ma'am?
No, no.
No, okay. You go back up. If you'll come back up, we'll open it to the commissioners. If these gentlemen want to come back in case the commissioners have questions of you?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll open it up to commissioners. Any questions from the commissioners?
Yes.
Any comment? Yes. Commissioner Duranty.
Okay. Now, looking at the rendering and the site plan, is this going to be a sit-down along as a drive-through or just a drive-through?
Most likely just a drive-through.
Now, what's this whole front portion for on the rendering?
The front portion.
With all the windows and everything, isn't that a dining area?
No, it's not necessarily a dining area. It's just to make it look nicer, to open it up, and while employees are working in there, so it's just being behind all brick to kind of let natural light come through.
There is, I know of a lot of drive-throughs in our city right now. There's only one that I know of in the city that doesn't have sit-down along with the drive-through, and that's siding. All the rest of them have sit-down. Who do you propose is going to rent this building for a drive-through only?
Well, it's not a drive-through only. If we rent it to somebody that requires seating, then we will allow them to have seating in there.
But you're not asking for approval for a restaurant with a drive-through. You're asking for approval for a drive-through only. I, my suggestion is, first of all, you've got to be specific. I want a drive-through or I want a restaurant with a drive-through. You can't, you can't say, okay, I want a, I want a drive-through today. Oh, somebody wants to put a restaurant in here now, so I need a restaurant to come back later. You can't get approval for a drive-through and put a restaurant there. You have to get approval for a drive-through, a restaurant with a drive-through.
Okay.
Okay. And honestly and truly, with as many vacant restaurants with drive-throughs that we have now vacant in the city without a specific person to rent it to, are you sure you want to do that?
Well, if I didn't rent it to somebody, I would develop it myself and own it myself.
As what?
As I can maybe do a savvy sliders. I've been talking with savvy sliders, and we've been in talks about maybe partnering up for that location.
Well, that's a different story. That's not what it says in here. And that's why I'm asking this question, because I don't want to see you build a restaurant and have it just sit there vacant, because we have already too many vacant restaurants in the city.
Believe me, I don't want to do that. I don't want to dump $2 million and just sit on it.
I would be very specific and get with him and maybe change the wording to a restaurant with a drive-through.
Okay.
Mr. A. B., could you give us clarification on that?
Yes, I can tell you for certain that we received -- I can tell you for certain that the zoning ordinance allows general restaurants to be approved administratively. The only element that is coming before the planning commission tonight is the drive-through operation. If this gentleman at a later date, even tomorrow, wanted to have a sit-down element to this restaurant, he is --
Compliant with the parking requirement and could do that administratively.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Stand, let him finish.
I ran into that problem when I opened one of my restaurants. Then I applied for one, and then they said I couldn't do the --
Commissioner Duranty, let him finish, and then you can add your points to it at the end. Thank you.
I guess I'll just add to the second point that it's not, it's also not uncommon, while maybe not preferred, but it's not uncommon to see developers come before the planning commission with a site plan that they want to get approved and then at a later time find a tenant. This is like the planning commission and the planning department deal with very preliminary and early stages of development, oftentimes when developers don't even have construction documents already paid for in design and oftentimes, sometimes don't have tenants lined up to take over a site. So my guess is he'll get approval tonight and then maybe put a sign out front or start shopping the property out, telling others that he's received city approval for a drive-through restaurant, potentially with seating, I'm sure with seating. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioner Duranty?
Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. You put my mind at ease by saying that if nothing else happened, you would open, develop it yourself.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Just one moment. Commissioner Richards, did you have commentary or were you offering the motion?
She's got some questions.
I got a question, too, before we do the --
Oh, everybody's got questions now? Okay, great. I'll go then. So I only had really three items, and I'll direct them to the, to the chair, most of them to the chair. First of all, we did receive a number of concerns from the, from the school that's nearby that's abutting, and we were made aware in study session that, that these responses were by the petitioner. And I just wanted to state that I found the, the responses to be reasonable, very diplomatic. Not all of the questions made a whole lot of sense to me, but I'm glad that they were, well, that they were addressed appropriately by, by the, by the petitioner. So the petitioner, Mr. Chairman, may have already answered this, but seeing as how the, as how one of the curb cuts makes perfect sense, being, being on Wayne Road.
Correct.
But the other curb cut that's planning on being used is off of Glenwood, meaning that the, that the patrons would have to pass by the existing gas station to, to use the, to use the, to get access to the, to the, to the restaurant. I'm wondering if the, if the restaurant and the, and the gasoline station share ownership as, in some way, shape, or form, as well as sharing the curb cuts. They're obviously on, on associated plots of land because of the curb cuts.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if, if, if there's going to be a, an ownership or a, or a potential conflict of, of use there.
We will let these gentlemen answer that. Same owners?
And the last thing is probably, I do want to ask one more question, but that's probably best directed to the administration.
Very good.
So to answer your question?
I'd love it.
Yes, the owner owns both. He owns the gas station now, and you've been there how many years?
Just under 20 years. 19 years last month.
So, and that, and that green space has been there maintained by the owner all this time?
And the, and the resulting structure, if it goes forward, it will be leased but still owned by, by you, sir? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they're, so they might, they might complain to their lessor, but they're, but they're not going to get into an argument with you about, about using the, the curb cuts.
No.
Okay. That's, that was my concern there. The, the only other real concern I wanted to get clarified, I'm aware, because I'm on the ZUSC, that the, that the zoning may be slightly changing. This is obviously, under the current zoning, a, a special land use. Will this continue to be a special land use, considered a special land use under the new zoning that we're, the new proposed zoning?
Yes, the drive-through, drive-through operations will continue to be special land uses just because of the nature of the traffic coming into and out of the site and problems that arise specifically because of the traffic. Yeah.
So, so the, the concerns that we have today would still be concerns that we'd have after the, the proposed amendments become the new zoning?
Sure.
Okay. That's all I really had, just to make a statement that generally I think this is a, this is a decent proposal. I believe that there was some discussion, and I invite the discussion to, to be, to be made, about a three-foot wall as opposed to a --
I think Commissioner Ruby is going to address that.
And I'd love to hear that conversation.
Commissioner Ruby.
Well, thank you. You know, as you said, I wanted to address question number two about the drive-through providing a nice-looking adequate fencing. Can I suggest that you put a three-foot decorative wall on the property?
That's something we would, we would consider. We were thinking about putting a --
Along the north side.
On the north side, yes.
Right.
We were considering putting a bunch of arborvitae's there instead of the wall, just because there'd be some greenery, and during the winter, there'd still be some greenery. And I just thought it would be a nicer look than a brick wall.
And that would be true, but normally when you plant arborvitae's, you plant them at a five-foot or six-foot, and they do not touch. So it could be 10 years before they close that space. So a three-foot wall would, would take away headlights and, and some of the noise, and then your arborvitae's could still be put there and it would do that.
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay. Thank you. Well, there's just one more question, quick question. Coming in from Glen, Glenwood, you don't think it would be a problem that the cars have to go all the way around through the gas station to get to the restaurant?
Oh, they, they don't have to. They're coming --
But some people might want to come off Glenwood and go through --
Off Glenwood?
Yeah.
Well, if they're coming off Glenwood, they're going through --
Would they go through the back way?
Under the canopy to pump gas, or they're going straight under the canopy to park. So they're always going straight through there all the time.
So you don't think it'd be a problem? Okay.
I know, because it happens every single minute of the day.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
You mentioned a few minutes ago about Sammy Sliders.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you the owner of Sammy Sliders also?
Am I the owner? No, ma'am.
Because there's one very close to this.
Cherry Hill and Vinoy. Yeah, I think they have a two-mile radius for their franchisees, so that's a little further out than two miles.
So it could be a possibility.
Absolutely.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Duranty.
This, through the chair to Planning Commission Director, Director. I'm thinking that if there's both drive-throughs have a no-left turn, both the one on Wayne Road and the one on Glenwood have a no-left turn, how are the people supposed to go back down Wayne Road?
Is it a no-left turn on Glenwood as well?
That's what they said. That's what they're proposing, no-left turn on Glenwood and no-left turn on Wayne Road. That's what it says in here. So I'm, I'm thinking that --
You don't have that restriction right now, right? What's that? You don't have that restriction right now.
They have to be able to make a left turn onto Glenwood. I can see no-left turn onto Wayne Road, but they got to be allowed to make a left turn onto Glenwood so they can go back down Wayne Road at the red light.
And just, just as a note while we're talking about this, just as a note, we're talking about this, both curb cuts are existing.
I know that.
Yeah.
And, and in here it says that they're going to have no-left turn at both. It says it, where, where, I don't know exactly where it said it, but I read it.
Right. No, they, that's what was suggested. Yeah. That's what's suggested. Right now, there is no restrictions on both as existing curb cuts.
Right. But I, I don't think there should be a restriction on Glenwood because of the fact that people coming down Wayne Road is going to turn right into the driveway. People coming up Wayne Road is going to turn left into the driveway, which is fine. But we want no-left turn going out of, onto Wayne Road because of the traffic. It's too hard to make a left turn. But if they're not allowed to make a left turn onto Glenwood, which in turn, as a light, now they can make a left turn onto Wayne Road from Glenwood.
Correct. Right.
And that's why I suggest that the left turn sign on Glenwood be eliminated and just have it on Wayne Road. That's a suggestion on my part. I don't know what the administration has to say about it. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
I propose that question to you.
Yeah, so the administration with input from engineering and the police department are suggesting no-left turn lanes at Wayne Road and at Glenwood. If someone is going to have to, if you want to eliminate a no-left turn lane, I think I would suggest that you do it at Wayne Road because the Glenwood curb cut is extremely close to the intersection. So that would, that would be my opinion and thoughts and recommendation.
Well, I'm just saying, you can't have both no-left turns on. That's my opinion. They got to be able to go back down Wayne Road, or else it's going to be a hindrance. That's my opinion, I'm just throwing that out there for everybody to digest.
Anything else?
I don't think so. Nope. Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, no-left turn on Wayne Road, and there's going to be left turn on Glenwood?
Or vice versa. Or vice versa. No-left turn off of Glenwood, but okay on Wayne Road?
Yeah, no-left turn on Wayne Road.
No, no-left turn on Glenwood, but okay to turn left on Wayne Road?
No, Wayne Road, that's, you're talking, you know, crossing three lanes to get northbound.
There's a median, there's a median lane there. I mean, it's easy to pull into the median and go to your right. I mean, people do it all the time now.
Mr. A. U.
I would suggest the planning commission go with the recommendation of the police department, and I can revisit that conversation with them to see how we can better accommodate this in a more business-friendly fashion.
And that, that could be done before it goes to city council?
It could go, yes, definitely. Yeah, we got a couple of --
Okay. That could come through you.
Sure.
Read, gentlemen?
We agree.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Everybody's good?
If I, if I may offer my, my thoughts on the subject?
Absolutely.
Because I'm not likely to talk to Mr. A. U. otherwise.
Very good, sir.
To the, to the administration, I would suggest that, given the, given the choice, I believe that the, that we might be running into an ordinance situation here because the curb cut is very close to the, to the, to the intersection. I believe that's a safety ordinance because people that, people coming down Glenwood and Wayne in that area would be utilizing the, the turning lanes to make their turns and would not be as, as aware of the, of the encroaching traffic.
Right.
But I submit, if it helps your, if it helps your, your discussion in any way, shape, or form, that Glenwood specifically has an extremely low traffic, traffic density. And given the two choices, I would submit that, that making an exception for a left turn onto Glenwood would make the most sense safety-wise.
Okay. It is, it is definitely a valid point brought by the commissioner about them not being able to get back onto Wayne Road going, what is that, northbound? So definitely take a look at it with the police department.
Okay. So where we stand at this point, you're in agreement to the decorative fence and the arborvitae's on the north side?
Yes, sir.
And you will get with Mr. A. U. between now and the council to work out the differences and arrangements on the left turns?
Yes, sir.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. Motion's in order.
Hearing nobody else jumping at the opportunity, I'll make the, the motion regarding case number 1684B. Move to close public hearing, waive the normal rules, and send the site plan and special land approval for proposed drive-through restaurant at 2646 South Wayne, northwest corner of South Wayne and Glenwood to city council with a recommendation for approval subject to departmental requirements and recommendations, and also under the, the recommendation that a three-foot --
Yeah, decorative wall, yes.
-- wall, as mentioned by, by my colleague, and otherwise, as has been mentioned here, an open session.
Support?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Duranty. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve case number 1684B with conditions mentioned on the record. Duranty?
Yes.
Foltz?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
And Sharp?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, good luck working out with Mr. A. U. and before you go to city council, good luck.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will move into our next case, which is case, also a public hearing, 2056M, preliminary site plan proposal for proposed medical building on Cherry Hill and Superior Parkway. Mr. A. B.
Thanks, Chairman. The subject site here is located on the north side of Cherry Hill between Superior Parkway and the Canton Township line. That property, that is, that looks like it has wooded debris. has wooded debris, uh, is where Canton Township is. That property is in Canton. Uh, the property abuts the ITC Transmission Corridor on the north side. That's that sort of rectangular area, large area vacant, grass planted. Uh, the property is, uh, and was zoned PUD, Planned Unit Development, as part of the Brookfield Village Development, um, to the north of it, and comprises of an undeveloped 1.14 acres. The petitioner proposes, uh, a modification to the previously approved PUD, uh, in order to develop, uh, approximately 6,400 square-foot medical building. Uh, adjacent land uses and zoning, property to the north is zoned I-2. This is the ITC Transmission Corridor. Uh, properties to the south are zoned R-5, uh, single-family residential and developed with single-family dwellings. Properties to the east are zoned, um, I-2, again, ITC, and PUD. Uh, this is the Superior Parkway, uh, road servicing the Brookfield, uh, Village Development, um, over here. And property to the west is, again, located in Canton Township. Uh, it is currently developed by a firewood supplier. The petitioner proposes, again, approximately, um, I forget what it was, 6,000 square-foot medical building, uh, on the vacant site. Uh, the exact medical use, uh, at the time of writing this staff report was not identified. Uh, site access is proposed via a curb cut, um, off of Superior Parkway. Superior Parkway today primarily services the Brookfield, uh, subdivision, which this site is a part of. Uh, the site will contain 32 off-street parking spaces, uh, that is compliant with the zoning ordinance requirements. The one-story, uh, building, uh, is proposed to be constructed using, uh, brick materials, uh, and a hip-style roof. Uh, I point that out because the design, um, of a hip-style roof, one-story, uh, kind of blends in with the residential character of the surrounding area. The, um, building elevations are attached and shown on your screen. The site plan indicates, um, we don't have the landscaping plan, I apologize, but the site plan, uh, does indicate, uh, extensive landscaping, uh, provided throughout the site. Uh, this includes a 25-foot landscape buffer along the front property line, uh, that also includes some trees. Additional landscaping is provided throughout the site, uh, including an area to screen, uh, the facility, um, along, let me see here, um... I'm sorry, okay. Um, along Superior Parkway, there is an ornamental fence, uh, as well along both Cherry Hill and Superior Parkway. There's a photometric plan in your backup, uh, showing compliance with the site lighting ordinance, uh, not to exceed requirements. Uh, there is a dumpster enclosure at the rear of the site, to the north of the site, uh, abutting that ITC, uh, Transmission Corridor, that will be constructed with, uh, masonry exterior. Stormwater management will have to be approved by the county like any other, um, development that comes before the city. Um, that's really all I have about this, uh, project. We are recommending, uh, this be forwarded with a recommendation to approve. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is petitioner here? Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Gassan Abdou from JV and Associates Architect. I'm representing the owner that is with me here tonight. Uh, first, thank you for having us here tonight, and we thanks the planning department, uh, that, for the help that we've been going through for this project. Actually, it's nice to tell you that we've been in front of you here in 2001. We did get site plan approval on the same property with the same owner for a gas station, but in 2001, because 2008 came and all the headaches, so we decided not to do it, and now we're here back in front of you to kind of propose that medical building slash office, because we, we don't know exactly who's gonna be leasing that space. It can be any, uh, you can have one doctor in it, or you can have three different doctors with a, uh, corridor at the center to different suites. So we still, or anywhere be lawyers or somebody part of that process. The main thing is, we're trying to design this building. We're trying to make it very kind of easy access to the, from Cherry Hill and from Superior. Uh, uh, like we said, we do have, I do have some drawing, one drawing for the landscaping, if somebody likes to see it. We are providing a lot of landscaping around the property and give a nice buffer. And the building itself, we're designing a building with brick, limestone, and a hip roof, and the entrances of the hip roofs, we made, uh, some kind of metal roofing on it, just to give it a nice character with a nice lighting around it. And, uh, we provided the, the photometric to make the project works, uh, good in the neighborhood, because we are going to a subdivision, so we wanna make it more residential look into that process. And, uh, I think the circulation works very well. We have enough parking for the building, and we're here to ask you to, hopefully to approve us and, yeah, keep the process going and start building, so. And I will answer any questions unless the owner has anything to say.
Um, just a couple of things, like he mentioned, uh, when we first purchased the property, it was part of the development of the residential and the, the developer there had a couple of commercial parcels, and it was approved for a gas station back then. So we had, the reason why we bought is because that we had plans to do it, but with the, like you said, with the economy and all that, we decided to put it outside. But then when we decided, uh, back in, uh, 1718 to go ahead and develop it, at that time, it was brought to our attention, I remember it's 15-plus years later, to, the, Westland too saturated with gas stations and a lot of buildings and whatnot, so it wasn't the best fit for it. So we felt, you know, maybe we'll do something a little bit different, and that's why we're proposing this, you know, and I think it'll be good. You know, even though it's medical, it's more of a professional office building, so we're gonna entertain, uh, physicians, uh, you know, orthodontists, you know, maybe a, uh, urgent care, if, if you will, uh, attorneys, you know, all professional. And that's what, uh, and hopefully it'll look nice, because for almost 22 years, I've been cutting that lawn, and I'm tired of cutting that lawn. So hopefully, uh, you guys will be pleased for what we're, what we're proposing.
Very good. Very good. I, I think you made a just, you said 17, 19, I think could be reversed.
Exactly. Yes. Yes.
That was way long before.
You look like you're in good shape, but I don't think you're that old.
There's been two days I cut that lawn. I think I'm all mixed up.
Right. All right.
It's a Benjamin Button.
Yeah.
Meaching in reverse.
This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to anybody here, and we'll have you come back up.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Anybody on my right wish to speak on this? Yes, please come up and identify yourself, uh, introduce yourself.
All right, so, never done this before, so bear with me. Hello. Um, so I'm Tamara Henderson. I actually own, uh, one of the condo condominiums at Brookfield Village that's facing, um, where he's proposing to do the medical. So a couple of things that concern me, first off, is the traffic in and out Superior Road, that little, can I go over there a little closer so I can see it? Okay, it's just very, it's very congested coming home, making a left, even to get to, even to get home, and it's a lot of traffic. So I heard in the other case you did a traffic study. I'm wondering if you've considered, because it's a two-lane road, the backup to make a left turn to get home. It's my first concern. And then the other concern is, I mean, of course, it's gonna go up and block the view. I'm sure there's nothing I can do about that, but just the idea of with that wood, um, that whole situation, the noise, the cutting of the wood, and that's a whole nother thing, I know, but it is just very congested going back and forth into Superior Highway. And at times, we're waiting, especially during traffic, uh, I would say 7:30, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock in the morning, but coming home is ridiculous, trying to make that left, and because it's not a left-turn lane, traffic backs up. So I like to put that, I, I would like to, uh, have you all consider that. And then, if I may ask, is afterwards, if I could just talk to someone about what's happening at that firewood place, if that's okay?
Well, yeah, the firewood's in a different city. That's in Canton.
Oh, I would need to go to another building.
Yes, yes, that's Canton there, so...
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Anyone on my left wish to speak on this? Anyone? Gentlemen, if you'll come back up, we'll open up the commission. Any questions from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Volks.
Uh, I'm happy to see that if you're gonna put something in that area, it, it's gonna at least mirror the area. It's not gonna be something that's gonna look bad in a residential area, so that I'm, I'm happy to see that. My question on the type of building and the number of offices it's gonna be in there, and you're saying it's a mixed use, possibly attorneys, possibly medical, all that type of thing. And my other question is, is one of the big, big, um, health systems looking at you or just gonna do community-type physicians?
Correct. Yes, so as far as how many tenants, because of the size, 6,000 square feet, we're going to pre-lease it. It's, could be a possible one tenant, or it could be a possible of six tenants.
Okay.
Uh, there's a couple of designs that we designed, so it won't be an abundance of, you know, and again, it's a one-story, um, but majority of the medical will also benefit the community.
Okay.
Um, especially if it's like an urgent care, dentistry, orthodontist, uh, podiatrist, anything that's, you know, can service the community, uh, would be beneficial for the tenant and the neighborhood, but I don't think, uh, it will serve a lot of traffic like, uh, commercial retail. Um, I understand the concern. Um, honestly, I've, uh, you know, never seen that, you know, as far as a bottle up, you know, to try and turn in Superior. I haven't been there long enough to see that. Of course, like I mentioned earlier, I cut the grass, I'm listening to music, and I'm just making sure that it's nice and clean and not worried about it, but I will say that when I do spend the time there, and sometimes it takes me a couple, two, three hours, um, everything's smooth sailing. So a lot of traffic, so, you know, hopefully, uh, it doesn't become a nuisance, you know, and I think it'll be, uh, I think it'll be good.
But actually, also with this design, it's way better than a gas station. Gas station would be very much traffic-wise. So, uh, so we, we kind of chose that kind of, uh, design, that kind of use, that it's way less traffic, and most of these are by appointments, so you're not gonna have a lot of people just waiting there and going through the process.
And probably early closing, you know, depending on if it's, you know, uh, even if it's an urgent care, I mean, you, then it'll be just, you know, benefiting, uh, you know, emergency, but, um, this also, again, it's a one-story, it's not a skyscraper, so, you know, should, uh, blend in pretty nice with that. And as far as that, uh, the log place next door, the wood and all that, yeah, it's in Canton, and, uh, you know, not much we can do about that.
Right.
So, but, uh, that's pretty much, uh, you know, and then we did, um, design the building to face Superior, because when people, you know, enter the property, they're gonna see that's, you know, the main entrance, if you will. So a lot of the parking is gonna be facing Cherry Hill, but it's set back to where it's not like right up on the road.
Yeah, we have, uh, we have your whole set, yes. We all, we, yes, we all receive a set of, of the entire plan, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of greenery.
Yes. Yeah, if you turn it and let those, those ladies there see it, that would be ideal. Thank you, sir.
I just wanna make sure to tell them that we are adding a lot of trees, a lot of greenery, so we wanna make sure it's kind of buffered, so...
Okay. Uh, any other comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Rep. Port.
Thank you very much. This is, uh, this proposal's actually a little bit more interesting to me personally, because, um, I live actually nearby the area.
Okay.
So I have a lot of, I have a lot of exposure to, uh, to this, to this site. Uh, Frank's Firewood, yeah. Canton needs to do something about Frank's.
Well, it would be blocking some of it.
Yeah, depending on the, uh, on the, uh, on the, uh, on the Cherry Hill-facing bermage, uh, you could actually make it a little bit, shame them into making their, uh, their, their area a little bit nicer.
If I may add, you know, when we purchased it and we were planning development, you know, there was nothing back there. The development was on the other side. They said it would be later on where they were gonna put single-family homes, but it was all empty land and...
Right.
You know, now it's nicely developed, very nice now.
Well, and I'd like to comment that I'm super, super happy. This is the first I'm finding out that a gas station was ever proposed...
Yeah.
For that location.
2001.
And I think, I think that not putting a gas station there was definitely the right move. It wouldn't have the right feel for that area, I don't think. And they put a value on that. That's why we purchased it back then, because it, the value that we did pay for it was because of the approval.
Now, I do have a, I do have a slight concern...
Okay.
Um, because, uh, the, uh, the proposal is silent as to the medical use. It's just going to be a medical-use building as is proposed. And I understand, and I, and I appreciate that you've, uh, that you've opened it up and made it more clear that it's more intended as a professional use.
Exactly.
So, so useless lawyers like myself could possibly go in there and, and give you money.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, but, uh, the, uh, there, there is a little bit of a concern for, uh, for traffic congestion as the, uh, as the, as the citizen actually raised. If, for example, the, uh, the medical use that we're talking about is an urgent care, that has a much higher, uh, a much higher, uh, traffic potential than, say, an orthodontist or a, uh, or an ophthalmologist.
Yeah.
But we do need that requirement.
And, and we should honestly be a little bit more concerned about that, uh, for what it might do as far as traffic is concerned.
Yeah.
As I said, I, I frequent the area because I live in the area.
Yeah.
I will say, in, uh, in support of the, uh, the comments that you've heard, uh, during, uh, during, uh, times of, of peak traffic, uh, it's actually difficult to, uh, to make a left turn, uh, coming towards your, uh, towards, towards your site...
Sure.
Uh, on Cherry Hill to, to John Hicks with a light.
Yeah.
And, uh, there is definitely a, a potential concern for being able to get into or out of your site, uh, without the, uh, without the assistance of a traffic control device.
Yeah, it'd be beast.
And it's definitely a valid concern. I can't speak to, uh, to Superior Parkway at all, but, uh, but certainly it, it might be a thing for, uh, for either the administration to, uh, to look into, or for you to try to address, just to make your, uh, your site a little bit more accessible.
Oh, by putting, maybe proposing to try to get them to put a traffic light there?
Potentially. I, I'm just laying it out there as a, as a suggestion. This forum, this forum is best used to, uh, to put ideas...
Okay.
Forward and to raise concerns so that they can be heard and, and reasonably considered.
Okay.
So, that being said, I have no, uh, I have no misgivings for this, uh, for this, uh, proposal. It seems rational. It seems, uh, well within the, uh, within the, uh, the plan for usage.
Yeah.
And I would, uh, I would entreat my, my, uh, my, uh, colleagues to, uh, to approve.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would just like to add something for the record.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, and I think the petitioner is aware of this, and I didn't stress this enough in the beginning. I should've at least mentioned it. This is preliminary site plan approval, um, so this will be coming back. Uh, I think you guys know that, for final site plan approval next month. So just wanted to put that on the record, 'cause this is a PUD.
Preliminary, yes.
Yeah, they mentioned that to me. What is the reason of that again?
Sure. So, we, uh, the Planned Unit Development, uh, Zoning District is a flexible, extremely flexible, um, zoning district that deviates from all of our requirements in the zoning ordinance, uh, and generally speaking, throughout the state of Michigan, communities look at PUDs twice, uh, with their legislative bodies. So that would be the city council, um, and have two public hearings for it, which would be this venue here.
Okay.
So next month?
So next, yeah, there's no reason to delay it, so immediately next month we'll notice it, and then we'll have another...
If you can send me the information, lots of...
Of course, yeah. And that's a re, and that's really, uh, meant to help, um, modify the plan, and it's, it's, it's for bigger developments typically than, uh, a medical office, but that's, that's what a PUD is.
Now, whether it be an additional, uh, fee, or is it all part of the, okay. So it's basically the same type of format?
It will be this exact format, uh... It will be this exact format, maybe, maybe with less discussion, I don't, I don't know.
We'd be glad to see you again next month.
Good, you also.
I didn't mean to say that.
Any other comments? If not, a motion is in order?
I'll take that again.
Yes.
Regarding case number 2056, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, do I have the floor?
Yes, you do.
Thank you very much. Regarding case number 2056M, preliminary site plan approval for proposed medical building, move to close public hearing, waive the normal rules, and send the proposal to city council with a recommendation for approval. Support.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Durante. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve case number 2056M, Durante.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Yes. Gentlemen, we look forward to seeing you again next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time, thank you.
Yes, thank you for increasing your business opportunities within our city.
Absolutely, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the consideration for the annual report, motions in order. So vote?
Vote.
And we got a motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Richards. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve. Roll call, vote to approve the 2022 Planning Commission Annual Report as presented. Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
The next and the last item on our agenda now is the elections of officers for the year 2023. The first position will be for chairman.
At this time, I'd like to nominate Chairman Sharp.
I support that.
And a motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by, supported by Commissioner Folks. Are there any other nominations?
I'd move to close the nomination and what?
Roll call on both, is there support for close the nomination?
Support.
Motion by Durante, support by Rappaport to close the nominations, roll call on those two items.
Okay, roll call to appoint Commissioner Sharp as chairman. Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
And Sharp. Yes, thank you, thank you.
I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Rappaport as, what do you call him?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair.
I support that.
Motion by Durante, supported by Commissioner Richards. Are there any other nominations?
I believe that Commissioner Folks also would like to be considered for vice president, and therefore I nominate Commissioner Folks.
Can you do that?
You're nominating Commissioner Folks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there support?
Can you do that?
Is there support?
Yeah, I can nominate my own opponent, that's fine.
Support by Commissioner Durante?
I can support somebody that I didn't nominate.
The motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Durante, to nominate Commissioner Folks.
I make a motion that we table this election until March, when we have more of the board present.
Just.
Well, you've already nominated and done one.
That's all right.
Table it from here forward?
Yes, until March, when we have more of the commissioners present to make a vote.
Is there support for that?
Why no support? I say support.
Did you support it? All right, Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Durante, supported by Commissioner Richards, that the position of vice chair and anything following that be postponed until the March meeting. Roll call, please.
If I may, before we call this matter to a vote, the, I understand the, the commissioner's concern there, that we would have more people to make a, a better decision. My concern would be if the chair were to be absent for, for the next meeting, who would actually run the meeting if we do not actually elect a vice chair?
It'll be the current.
It's a good question.
Would it be the current VP, vice president?
There is no current VP.
That's right, that person's gone.
Yes.
Then it would be the secretary.
Well, we'll have to nominate a secretary then.
We have a secretary already in place.
Yeah, we do.
Huh?
Yes, from last year.
Yeah, so they could, if worse comes to worse, they could run the meeting until the election was completed.
I would be voting no, not because of my decision to, to have the position, but I don't think the other two or three incoming commissioners would have enough knowledge, possibly.
But we have one permanent member that's missing, that would be the deciding vote.
That's true.
That's all I'm saying. We should wait until we have more of the commissioners here to make a vote on this, because there's two people running. If there was only one, I would say we could hold it today, but because there's more than one, I think we should table it until the March meeting.
The last comment that I'd like to make is actually thus directed to the administration. My, I already hold a number of positions of, of leadership and authority, not just, not, obviously not in, in this body, but I am the chairperson of the, of the ZBA, and I serve this body as the liaison between this body and that body. I am concerned that I'm not actually permitted under the, under the Enabling Act to, to take that leadership position. Does the, does the administration have any knowledge or direction on this?
I do, but do you want me to say that you are not allowed to? Because I can.
I would, I would.
To expedite things.
My position has always been that I will serve the city in any capacity that I'm required to serve the city. However, if it is, if it is more convenient, I certainly do not require a vice presidential, a vice presidential position on this board and a chair position on another board as well.
So withdraw your name.
With that being said, I'll respectfully withdraw my, my nomination for, for consideration if it allows us to move forward.
Does the motioner of that agree to that?
Yes.
All right, so.
For the record, I very much appreciate the, the nomination and the trust which, which my, my colleagues on this board would place in me, even to consider me for that position.
Okay, I make a motion that we close the nominations for vice chair and elect.
You have support for that?
Support.
Support. By Commissioner Durante, supported by Commissioner Rappaport. Now continue. And we elect Commissioner.
Move to, move to, to select as vice presen, uh, vice, vice chair.
Commissioner Folks.
Commissioner Folks by affirmation.
Affirmation. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The, and for clarification, according to the bylaws, we are not able to hold two positions within the city. What bypasses that is the council request, somebody from our board to sit with the ZBA.
The, the zoning, the zoning enabling act actually requires it.
Yeah, so that, that bypass is the fact that our bylaws say that we can't hold two positions because that is requested by another board within the city, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
The, well, we can make a motion for the secretary, but that would be the next, next position, but.
Was that not Commissioner Stachow?
Yes. Or we can wait.
Perhaps it's best that we.
Wait, okay. All right, so Sharp for continued as chairman, and vice chair will be Commissioner Folks. We will hold off on the secretary until the March meeting.
Okay. I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Well, let's see if our leader has anything else. Do you, sir?
I am just a spectator, not the leader, but you guys really threw a wrench in there on the vice chair stuff. Still not sure what happened, but I appreciate you guys and all the work that you do, and it's, it's fun witnessing all your engagement with the residents, and I appreciate it. I don't have anything further. I think we will see you next month, well, we for sure will because of the final PUD, but that's about it, thank you.
Yes, all right, we got, we got a motion by Commissioner Durante, is there support? Support by Commissioner Ruby, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.